AR 20-13, Proposed Amendment to Zoning Regulations, Section 10.52, Contractors Business and Storage Yards. This is, we're opening the public hearing tonight. John, can you give a summary of the application to the public, please?
So, for the record, this is John Gaskowski. Can the commission hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is a, an application that was submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission three or four years ago, and passed but was challenged and ultimately overturned on procedural grounds rather than substantive grounds. And recently, the, the Regulations Subcommittee opted to revisit this and, and, you know, bring the, bring the Contractor Storage Yards modifications back to the commission for their consideration. So, this is something that the commission looked at more than once, three or four years ago.
Thank you very much. Since this came from the commission, I'd like to start with comments from the public and then come back to the commission members. So, with that, this public hearing again is being recorded and we're going to ask that anybody from the public who wants to participate, please sign in through the chat feature and we can make sure that we record that and also get you set up to talk. We start with those people in the public who are in favor of this application and we would have anyone there sign up that would like to speak. I see Pamela Fritz has signed in. Pamela, are you speaking in favor of this? Pamela, I'm sorry, we're not able to hear you if you are talking. You can enter your testimony into the chat feature. We are capturing that also in the minutes if you have something you want to say.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, now I can hear you, that's better.
I was unmuted.
Okay, go ahead. Pamela, you can speak.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity to speak before the, the commission and I have a prepared statement which I would like to read to you and I'd actually, I actually like to email it to you afterward. I'm sorry I wasn't able to get it to you beforehand if that's acceptable.
That's fine.
On May 10th, 2019, the Clinton Taxpayers Association, in a cooperative effort with the aggrieved plaintiffs, won a court battle to appeal a Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission 2016 regulation governing contractor storage yards. Judge Matthew Frichette's decision said, "The action of the defendant commission was invalid because Neary, the defendant, participated in the public hearing in deliberations, although he was disqualified based on his personal and financial interest in the passage of, of then AR 16-112." The court conclusion reads, "For the foregoing reasons, the court hereby sustains the plaintiff's appeal and invalidates the commission's decision amending its regulations." On page 10 of Judge Frichette's decision, he gave a lengthy explanation of how these contractor storage regulations would change directly, and finance, excuse me, would changes would directly financially benefit the Neary Corporation. At that time Carl Neary was a member of P&amp;Z. Fourteen months have passed and the Contractor Storage Yard regulations that had been declared void by the judge's order are still published as if they are current Clinton zoning regulations. We consider this is a contempt of court action by the PZC. At the July 6, 2020 meeting of the PZC, some members discussed the court's decision as if it were a procedural issue. This is far from the truth if you read Judge Frichette's order. Many contractor storage yards in Clinton offer little or no protection to the abutting neighborhoods. Outside storage has turned them into unregulated junkyards, abandoned cranes and inoperable construction equipment and trucks, stockpiles of old materials and more littered landscapes. It sits there for years with no inspections or permits required. We have the pictures to prove it and is it a disgrace to our town? I would like to suggest that you look at your other regulations. I'm going to point out manufacturing, 12.44, warehousing, 12.45, self-storage warehouses, 12.46, marine contractor storage, 12.51, and motor vehicle repairer, 12.61. Many of these regulations, and I can't obviously take your time to go into all of them, but I have looked at them, many of these regulations are far more well-conceived and contain content regulations and inspections that are applicable to the contractor storage yards as well. Now, the CTA even hired Brian Miller, a licensed engineer, to work together with the PZC to write new regulations. We met with the Regulations Committee but so far our efforts have gone on deaf ears with the commission. The PZC would further insult the court's decision by passing almost exactly the same contractor storage yard regulation that is before us this evening. In Judge Frichette's decision on page 10, he states, "An owner of a storage yard will materially benefit from the relaxed standards implemented by the commission." He was referring to the exact same thing you are looking at this evening, incidentally. Such amendments permit contractor storage owners to benefit financially through an increase in hours of operation of business, the ability to store more materials in the storage yard, decrease in expense of enclosing the storage yard, and in sum, ease the manner in which business operates. He concluded, "The amendments approved by the commission therefore substantially benefit," and in this case it was the Neary Corporation's bottom line, "resulting in financial gain for themselves." This defiance of Judge Frichette's order would not only exacerbate the issue for P&amp;Z. Your regulation is written, as written, will financially benefit all current contractor storage yards, including those owned by the Neary Corporation, to the abutting residential districts and abutting residential neighborhoods. Planning and Zoning Commission has already spent over $12,000 that I know of Clinton taxpayers' money on legal fees defending this case. For the PZC to spend more time of the Clinton taxpayers' money on legal fees for a case they have already lost in court is inconscionable. In closing, I would like to simply state that we may find it necessary to pursue the PZC's contempt of court and the PZC's failure to comply with the May 2019 judgment of John Matthew Frichette.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Please, if you do want to email that to us, make sure you email it to Lisa Di Maria. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none, I will ask if there's anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this. I see that Barbara Curiel, I'm butchering your name, Barbara, I'm sorry, you've written a comment. Do you want to testify? Next, I see that Kirk Carr has signed up. Kirk, do you want to speak in opposition?
Yes, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? Okay. Thank you very much for your, thank you for your service, this opportunity to get your, actually, the memo that I sent as official correspondence, but I respectfully request that it and all attachments that came with it be posted as part of the minutes of this meeting. The proposed amendment comes before the commission for the third time tonight. The first time this amendment was rightly denied in a vote of one in favor and six opposed, one abstention, and three not voting on July 11, 2016. It was hastily brought forward again a month later after the original applicant, Kimberly Neary Simicini, met with Republican Chairman Mike Newsom. Following chaotic and disgraceful public hearing on August 29, 2016, at which all Congress voted against the amendment, it was passed in a 100% partisan vote, five to four, with two not voting at the September 12, 2016 meeting. The four to four tie, which would have denied the amendment, was broken by Chairman Mike Newsom, who was under unbearable pressure to pass this amendment. On May 10, 2019, Honorable Judge Matthew Frichette reversed the commission's decision. In that decision, he noted that, quote, "Neary's conduct during the September 12, 2016 deliberations equated to participation, which he attempted to influence members of the committee and the chairman, who had the last and deciding vote, when he pointed to the chairman as he was about to cast the deciding vote," unquote. If you watch the video from the links I provided, you can see that this was an extremely dramatic moment. Please remember that both Ms. Simicini and her father Carl Neary were extremely influential members of the RTC Search Committee that recommends the RTC to endorse or elected and appointed positions. Had any of the five Republicans who voted for this amendment done otherwise, they would assuredly have been blackballed from ever receiving a Republican endorsement for any public position in Clinton. Arguably, Mike Newsom would not have been endorsed by the RTC to serve on this commission ever again and would not be on it at this time. On May 10, 2019, Judge Frichette reversed the commission's September 12, 2016 decision, yet the court-reversed amendment is still reflected as amended in the Clinton zoning regulations on the town website over 14 months after this decision was overturned, placing the commission technically in contempt of court. The commission and the town have been the victims of extreme poor legal advice and representation. The commission always had the option of dropping the amendment and putting it through a sanitized process again without the participation of a corrupting influence. That would have been in the commission's best interest, but not in your attorney's best interest. By litigating this all the way to a court decision, your counsel not only lost the case in court, siphoned thousands of taxpayer dollars needlessly, but also subjected the commission to a blistering judicial rebuke of both the process and the decision reached. Do you really want to risk going to court again with this, the representation against this litigant, with this judge, when you're technically in contempt of his court? The only people who were proponents of this amendment are no longer present to advocate for it. But if some members of the public wish to propose this amendment again, that is certainly their prerogative. But this amendment has been needlessly recycled by the commission. On whose behalf? We don't really know. This is a self-inflicted, unforced error. And clearly, those parties opposed to this amendment are litigious and successively so. Is this really a legal fight worth continuing when your counsel has so poorly advised and represented you? Is it in the best interest of Clinton or the commission to prolong this legal fight on behalf of no one who advocates publicly in favor of it now? And at what expense? Please do not be misled. This amendment was not popularly passed by the commission and is not overturned on some simple insignificant procedural failure. Taxpayers of Clinton dug deep into their own pockets and limited resources to challenge this PZC decision as best they could, while PZC attorneys, knowing that this was highly likely to be reversed in court, continued to guzzle infinite amounts of taxpayer money to litigate against these Clinton citizens needlessly, extravagantly, and unwisely. In this round, David vanquished Goliath. Adam Moore is right when he says, "This proposed amendment is not perfect. It is deeply flawed in principle and in form, as outlined in my memo, which details these flaws line by line." However, he is wrong when he says, "It is better than what you originally had and are supposed to have now based on Judge Frichette's reversal." The Planning and Zoning Commission should deny this self-inflicted amendment once and for all at your next regular meeting. Blatant, brutal, partisan intimidation should never be rewarded by locally elected commissioners. Your neighbors are depending on you not to let the many and the vulnerable be victimized by the few and the powerful again. Vote no to protect them and to regain respect of the commission that this amendment and process so ruthlessly squandered. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing that Kirk said that reminded me, I failed to have Lisa read the correspondence list into the record. Lisa, could you please do that at this time?
Yes. In file, we have meeting minutes from the 7/13/2020 PZC meeting, the legal notice of public hearing for the 8/3/2020 meeting, the agenda for the 8/3/2020 meeting, referrals to the town of Madison, Clinton, Westbrook, and Rivercog. We have the regulation markup, Section 10.52. We have an email from Kirk Carr dated 8/3/2020 for the commission to consider his attached correspondence, which includes PZC public hearing minutes from 7/5/2016, PZC regular monthly minutes from 7/11/2016, PZC public hearing minutes from 8/29/16, PZC regular monthly minutes from 9/12/2016, the MJM Self-Storage versus Clinton memorandum of decision from the Connecticut Superior Court dated 5/10/2019, Section 12 of the Clinton zoning regulations dated 1/1/2018, Section 28 of the Clinton zoning regulations dated 1/1/2018, and a memorandum to the Planning and Zoning Commission from Kirk Carr dated 8/2/2020.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor, I'm sorry, in opposition Hearing none, is there anyone who would like to sign up to speak in general comments Please, okay, in that case, I will take this to the commission members then. So, the first person I see is Ellen Dahlgren. Ellen, would you like to make a statement?
No. I'd like to start off, I want to clarify a couple of things. Number one is, the regulations that are posted online as part of Section 12 of the zoning regulations are not those that are currently in effect. The posted regulations are those that were thrown out by the court. The regulations that are, as I understand it, and I'd like John to kind of clarify this as we go through, that, secondly, the regulations that are the subject of this application and the ones that are attached to the agenda show the section number as 10, not 12. The overall regulations have been reorganized, I believe, since the past, since all this happened back in 2016. The court threw them out and the regulations that are currently in effect are Section 12, whereas what we have in front of us is all noted Section 10. So, this is an application actually to amend Section 12 of our existing regulations, not Section 10. Otherwise, I believe that the subsection numbers of the existing regulations are, as shown in the application materials, as attached, but all the subsection numbers come through but that the parent section now is 12, not 10. In accordance with customary practice for an amendment application, the text that is lined through in the application is actually that which is currently in effect and the text that is underlined is not currently in effect. The application is actually to, you know, remove the text that is lined through and to add the text that is underlined. And that is, and that going forward, so approving this application would put the underlined text into effect and it would remove the text that is lined through. Rejecting the application retains the text that is lined through and does not accept the underlined text. And if next week, we're making a motion to accept part or not part, that we should reference Section 12 dot whatever as opposed to 10 dot whatever because of the reorganization of the current regulations. Is that something that you, John, can clarify for us right now so that every, we all understand exactly what's before us and how the voting will have to, and what it is we're talking about?
That's, Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Go ahead, John.
So, yes, thank you, Ellen. I do apologize, the Section 10.52, as it was presented before you, is the version that we could find sort of of the, of the last proposed markup for contractor storage yards. You are correct in saying that with the reorganized regulations, that section is now properly under 12.52. So, any affirmative change would, you know, if the commission was interested in accepting these changes at the regular meeting next month or whenever you considered this, you would want to amend that, that all references to 10.52 and subsequent sub-letters, numbers would, should reflect 12.52. And you are correct, Ellen, that crossouts is original language to be removed and underline is new language to be added.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
So, you're finally correct that a vote against the proposal would retain original language, current language.
Okay. And the current language is, you know, is not what is hosted on the website. The current language is the, is what is crossed out in this section, in the materials that are attached to our agenda and does not include the stuff that is underlined in the application, in the application materials. What is, what is on the website is not the current regulation. What's on the website is what the court threw out. Is that correct?
Hi, John, is the website up to date?
I'll have to, I'll have to verify. Actually, it doesn't look like it is, but I'll need to verify.
Walter, you, Beau, you wanted to talk?
Yes. You know, in light of what Ellen just brought to light, that this, this is listed on the agenda as Section 10, and I'm assuming then it was legally noticed as Section 10, I think should we go forward with this without it being properly noticed, we might be in some sticky, in a sticky situation again, it seems.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the commission that would like to comment at this time? Ellen?
Yeah, I agree with Beau regarding the legality of the hearing. Beyond that, I think that this, there are a lot of things in our regulations. There are a lot of places where we use the kind of language that's here, but there's a word different. We should be, in, I'm talking about the conditions for other special exceptions. We should have kind of consistent language if we're going to, you know, describe the same exception. So, there's that. Another thing is the, the issue, the unresolved issue, I think, of whether or not we should maintain the original language, which set the setbacks in terms of residential, any residential use, not in terms of zone, just zoning, but residential use. And it, the way it's stated, is not clear that it also would apply to any residential use whatsoever. If it's, if it's an activity, there are residences there, but there's no, there's just no consistency in the, in the whole set of regulations. I also had a specific question about the percentage of lot area in marine zones at 75% that would allow for outside storage.
Ellen has asked to be recognized first and then I'll come to Adam after that. Ellen?
Yeah, just apropos of what Ellen had just said, if we recognize that, you know, if we could all, you know, have a clarification as to what's currently in effect, and I believe it's the, the pre-editing version of what was circulated, it would be possible to consider one or two provisions in a motion to change the regulations, you know, without necessarily changing everything. It's just that, you know, we would have to reference it as Section 12 dot whatever, although I am quite sympathetic to the point made by Commissioner Clark, which is that the, the entire meeting, you know, the entire agenda item was probably not properly noticed. I think that, you know, whatever we do here tonight, it would be, it would be very useful to update the online version of the regs. I mean, even if the, even if everything were passed next week, it wouldn't go into effect the day that it was passed. I believe that we need to get the online version that people are consulting in performance with reality and with the law.
Thank you. Adam?
I guess a couple of things. One, I agree with Ellen that, I mean, there's no confusion in my mind as to what is the current regulations, but we should correct what's on the website. I would suggest that we not accept this, that we renotice it under the current, under the proper sections. You know, for me, I was one of the ones that voted for this. I would vote for it again. I think that the proper process would be we, we renotice it for next public hearing. Between now and then, we send it to the Regulations Committee where we can look at a couple of these things. But my, my sense is that the people that didn't like it the first time aren't, aren't going to like it going forward and I don't want to give them any ammunition to put it back into litigation, so let's make sure it's properly noticed and, you know, if Ellen and whoever are And, you know, if Alan and whoever are willing to put this in our next Regulations Meeting, I think there's a couple of things we could clean up in it to make it better.
Okay. Thank you. And I would like to actually, um, at this point, limit further discussion from the Commission members, because I do believe that, uh, we have a problem with the way this was noticed, and so I would like to ask that we, uh, move right to closing this public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close it.
There's a motion on the floor. Or, you know, because he just asked for it.
Yeah, and Ed made the motion to close it. Do we have a second? Who said that? I'm sorry.
Beau.
Okay, and Beau seconded it. Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion about closing the public hearing?
I have one question. Do we want to close the public hearing? Do we want to withdraw the application? And do they have to be?
We can withdraw it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, so my second stands.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Lisa, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Ellen Dolgren?
Okay, I'm voting yes to close the public hearing.
Eddie Alberino?
Yes, I vote yes.
Beau Clark?
Yes.
Martin Jaffe?
Yes.
Alan Cravitz?
I vote no. I feel that to close the public hearing leaves what's on the table open to vote. I believe it should be withdrawn.
Adam Moore?
Yes.
And Will Benoit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the public hearing's closed. I, can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, John, you want to say something?
Just to Alan's point, I, I would think that the, the Commission could, uh, make a motion right now to withdraw the application. I don't think you need to wait till next week.
That's true. This is a regular meeting.
Since this is a regular meeting, I think we can do the, we can amend the.
Walter made, yeah, Walter made the motion.
Withdraw the application.
Thank you, Walter.
Do we amend the agenda first?
I don't think I need to amend it.
No. Adam, it's just seconded.
An item.
Okay, so, any further discussion on withdrawing this? Hearing none, Lisa, can you do the roll call vote again on withdrawing the application?
Ellen Dolgren?
I vote yes to withdraw the application.
Eddie Alberino?
I vote yes to do, dismiss this application.
Beau Clark?
I vote yes.
Martin Jaffe?
Yes.
Alan Cravitz?
Yes.
Adam Moore?
Yes.
Will Benoit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, the application has been withdrawn. Uh, at this time, then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Mr. Chairman, your order, please.
Uh, go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I, I was on phone at nine o'clock. I, my, my computer rebooted, like, I was on, I was talking to Kathy, so I was on phone at nine. I was present for the.
You mean seven.
At seven.
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll correct that in a minute.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay. Um, with that, did I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Second.
We got a motion from Walter and Eddie second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, it, we're closed at, uh, 7:51. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Night.